Hi, my name's David S. Roddy. I've been doing this for thirty years. And you say, "Why is he still doing this for thirty years?" Some people don't quit. You know, I can tell you one thing. If you put a filter on what's happened in the last thirty years, and you want it all to be set, it's really simple. People who run this city don't work for you. Montgomery County Democratic Party, who tells you to vote for them, they work for the demolition contractors. And once you figure that, demolition contractors and builders, everything makes sense. I mean, you know, I brought literature from thirty years ago, and I can start reading this, and you'll say the same problems exist today. And bring literature from twelve years ago, the same problems exist today. If you vote for these two incumbents, the same problems will exist. Four years from now, two years from now, people have changed. There are two people on this commission that have been trying to stop the backdoor deals, the service law, Daryl Fairchild, to fix anything. If you remove one of those two, things will change. If you reelect them, the demolition contractors win, developers win, and we lose. Now, I'm not going to tell you just very well my name would be that, because my neighbor wouldn't know that for years. Because I understand how the development works, how we're doing with these people to develop social capital. How making a neighbor like you want to live in makes more people want to come in. That's what we need to do to the whole city. If I can drive through the west side, and I see no progress, I can drive through downtown and see no progress. It's not the same.
It has been a tough few years. Twenty years ago, the great recession, the tornadoes and everything that happened. It's not been easy. But we've done okay. And there are great possibilities, which are much better now. You can see that with the last decade, we've knocked down thousands of houses. And as I was saying, there's been a lot of doors that we just want to be. I can see the difference from years before. You can see that there's been a lot of change. There were thousands of new jobs created, people working. And we've made strides, maybe most importantly, on making our city, the city where we're living, never ask, no matter what you look like. One thing that used to be pretty low, it doesn't matter. We want to be a woman's city, and we want to make sure everybody has the power and has the resources, the things they need.
I'm Chris Shaw. I, first of all, want to thank the citizens of Dayton. Thanks all of the members that are here today. I am one of the Black History Women who's working this issue. Spent a lot of time in the office here. I'm a senior board member, and I'm a resident of the House of Representatives. I have small businesses on my business. I've lived my family has owned a business, stood on the streets, or walked on the street for, I started a year. I understand what it takes to make this world. And I'm really concerned about making the next city just work. And if we are bringing our young people into the workforce, into the potential for progress, which I have helped to get, and still see it's really creating. To walk, to be, to get back hundreds of thousands of dollars to stand up this program, because we know how it works, and it's starting to be. These are good neighborhoods. Eighty, a hundred thousand dollars. And it's about making these connections. As Roddy is right, not in toxic health, but in building. Our jersey built in this city, because that's how we grow as a neighborhood. What we're doing down in Dayton, seventy percent of the population is definitely making a difference. So, best continued. Making great strides, bringing up, I like it again, when I continue to do that work, creating transportation, that keeps creating, really like to see each other. Traveling across the city, and how, just that, just returned last week. Doing that same business, but considering to do that work in the last three years. We have citizens who are a candidate, who are candidates, who are candidates. We have citizens who are a candidate, who are candidates, who are candidates. We have citizens who are a candidate, who are candidates, who are candidates. We have citizens who are a candidate, who are candidates, who are candidates.
Opening remarks from our six candidates, whose names will appear on the ballot next week, one week from today. We've had an opportunity here to open these speeches, and now we're going to get into Q and A session. What I want to say is, thank all of you for coming out. Thank you for being on this schedule. I'm each person to give respect to the state.
First-class city, a hub of thriving region. So my question to you as a candidate for city commission, and city commissioners, what services do you think we're providing well? What amenities and open government? And we'll start at the end and work our way down again. Two minutes.
So I think, right now, you can go to the city of Dayton, and you can actually get a lot of great services, and that's really important. What we need is more of that. We need city commissioners who are present in our neighborhoods. Now, I had experience working for the federal congress, for a member of congress when I lived in New York, and I worked in nonpartisan constituent services. So what that meant is, when constituents in the area had trouble with federal agencies, they came to our office, and we connected them to those resources. We need a lot more of that, and they, just as I've been running, people come to me, message me on social media, and say, "Hey, how can I register my business as a minority-based enterprise? How can I register my business as woman-owned?" We, you shouldn't have to come to a candidate for office for that. You should be able to go to your city and get a response. And they said to me, they've reached out to a number of people, they get nothing back. And so there's a disconnect between what the city offers and actually making it accessible to the city. Commissioner Shaw mentioned the jobs, the high-paying jobs. We need high-paying jobs. But if the people who live here in Dayton aren't connected to them, then who are you creating jobs for? So just across the board, there's a disconnect between what we say is happening and what people are able to access. And so if you need two and three degrees for a job, or if you don't have transportation to access a job, you're not really creating work. You know, you're creating talking points. And the same goes with our city services. We have to make sure people can access what we say we provide. And that's my perspective on the issue.
Okay. So, yes, the city provides services, you know, waste collection. They have parks and rec. They have different departments that, you know, are like public works for the streets, who are water. But they are not, those services are not meeting the needs of the neighborhood. A housing inspection unit, used to have thirty-six inspectors. Now, it dwindled down to two because of block grant money. And when that went out the window, our housing inspectors went out the window. They didn't change it over to general fund. I asked Nan Willey, when she was the mayor, when they were going to switch over to the general fund. She said in 2018 that that didn't happen then. And the results are, we have all these abandoned, rundown, dilapidated houses that under Matt Joseph's watch, and Chris Shaw. So, we need to revitalize our neighborhoods. They are, you know, some that need a wrecking ball. But there's a lot of things that can be revitalized in our neighborhoods, and that's where I'm coming from. There's so many programs that we can introduce. And there are, I have friends of mine that have two or three different jobs. Some of my friends went back to work to help their grandchildren, and their nieces and nephews, and everything else. So, there is a gap between what we say, or what we promise, like the North Main corridor, we've been talking about developing that for I don't know how many years. It's still the way it is on North Main. So, with your help, I'll get it going again. Thank you.
That, when I first bought my house in 1986, and what got me started in the political sphere, I bought a house for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars in South Park. No signs anywhere saying it was a historic district. First thing I'm doing is trying to fix it up. I put new garage doors up. City takes me to court, because the garage doors were wood-grained vinyl, instead of wood, or vinyl not imitating wood. And this is when there was a steel and plastic dumpster right there. So I go down to City Hall, and I plead my case, and it's like talking to a wall. No response. I was the bad guy. I had to take that door down, those doors down, and put up inferior doors that had to be replaced. That was their idea of making things work. Penalizing people for fixing up their houses, and they still do it. And the people who don't do it, you end up paying for their mistakes. And we cannot demolish our way to prosperity. I would rather spend the money that they're spending with Steve Roush and blade cutters on fixing houses that people live in, so that they are going to be able to stay there and survive. I would rather have open, honest government that's transparent, that doesn't give a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to a guy who once beat up five Dayton police officers, while ignoring my friend John Lumpkin, who's an Ohio State football star, and a former banker, and a great guy. He hasn't got a dime for his building in Wright-Dunbar. Can you explain how these things happen? I sure can. I know lots of small businesses that started in this city without any help from the city, because that's what I do in my business. Thank you.
So, the question was, what services and cities does the, services and amenities does the city provide well? I'll mention two that are near and dear to my heart. The first is recycling. When I started, there wasn't any such thing as recycling bins in the city. Over the time I've been here, we've expanded it. And now, every couple weeks, you can get the recycling picked up. It's not only the right thing to do, because it means less trash going into the dump. It's also better, a lot of the times, it's cheaper to do it that way, too. Second thing I would talk about is the way that we fought to bring back curbside leaf pickup. A lot of folks that live in neighborhoods with big trees, for a few years, had to bag the leaves. It's a lot of work, especially since there are a lot of seniors in those neighborhoods. So we were able to figure out a way, at much less cost, to bring back curbside leaf pickup. And the last one I want to talk about is a recent one, something we do well. Over the last year, almost a year now, we've had a unit called Mediation Response Unit, which, instead of, when people call for help for a situation that would be better handled by somebody who's unarmed, somebody who's not a policeman, a police officer, we send a mediation person, Mediation Response Unit to that. And it's been wildly successful, so much so that our officers are asking for them to respond to more. So I'm really proud of that service. I think that it helps keep the tension down, lowers the heat in some of those interactions, and provides better services for our citizens. Thank you.
Well, you stole a lot of my thunder. Oops, that's all right. So transparency, in terms of services and amenities in the city. We do a survey every year to ask you how you feel about your city government and the work that we're doing in the community across all of the departments. Public works is always very high on the list. And, you know, we rely on getting your feedback in terms of how we plan for how we're going to budget for the coming year. Issue nine, thanks to you, we are able to get funding to repave all of the roads, the side roads. And that work is starting to happen. It's been happening, and we're coming to the end of it. Very successful program. The Parks and Rec, now, we've had some issues there. It was not good to us in that way. We are trying to strengthen our pools, our aquatics program, but we need more lifeguards. So the work that I have been doing is, again, trying to connect young people and others with these high-paying, in-demand jobs, in order to help us provide the services to keep the wrecking parks facilities open and provide those services to our youth. We can't do that without your help, without, you know, kids getting into the lifeguard program, so that we can staff these operations. We're doing that work. So there are a lot of good things happening. I'm very proud of the work that our city staff has been doing under very difficult situations, and this is across the board. You know, we didn't get into the situation that we're in now overnight. It's about forty years. And we won't get out of it overnight, but we're making strides every day trying to work to make this city better. And we're going to keep doing that. And if you elect me, we are going to continue this work and make it even more robust and strengthen our communities and the services and amenities that you want. But we're going to continue to ask for that.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for that question. That was a great question. I'll be blunt, there's not many things we're doing great. For example, our city commission meeting. I'm honored that commissioners come once a week, every Wednesday, and allow you to talk to them for three minutes. But I'm really not a public speaker. I don't think a lot of you are public speakers, and to go to a commission meeting and to have everybody stretch for three minutes and talk, and then respond. I think that's somewhat good, but I think we need way more dialogue. Certain commissioners are going out to communities, doing town hall Q and As, questions and answers. What does that create? Dialogue. If I'm elected commissioner, and you ask me a question, I have to give you a response. Either I know the answer, or I don't know the answer. It creates trust, accountability. But the current setup now is, you go to the microphone and talk for three minutes, and then you're threatened to be placed under arrest if you talk a second afterwards. My dad and my mother are big into civil rights, in terms of holding the government accountable. There's one thing I do like. The Dayton Delivers Act. When I was a police officer, and you would call, and you had a problem. For example, trash, a hole in the ground. I was your fixer. I would fix it myself. I'd call dispatch and say, "Hey, at 126 West Norman, we got such and such a problem." This was ten, fifteen years ago. So our dispatch would parlay that to an unknown city function. There was no, you didn't get a case number. You couldn't go online, you couldn't go through your phone and get problems solved. So Dayton Delivers Act, I think is a pretty good idea. I think it could be enhanced, in terms of where are you in alignment. And Mr. Parks, Mr. John Parks, who's head of Waste Collection and Recycle, I think our waste collection is great. I love Mr. Parks. He's very responsive. If you have an issue with your trash can being stolen, call Mr. Parks. If you don't have his number, I'll give it to you tonight, after this meeting. He'll come and replace your trash can. You're saying stop? We're here to critique things, not to talk about how great things are going. We're all here born and raised in Dayton. Our minority business development has pretty much been decimated. One candidate talked about housing inspectors. That's when I was a police officer, was forty, fifty, now it's a few. It's on one hand. The emergency orders that we see certain commissioners just abuse, they're doing it left and right, sneaking through things that you don't know of, and things are just being snuck through. It's lacking transparency. Human Relations Council, that's pretty much just been decimated.
Thank you. We're going to mix it up a bit. We're going to start with Mr. Joseph, and go that way, and begin up here. And those that are listening are saying they cannot hear some of you. So I'm just going to ask you to talk to the people at the wall, so they can hear. So go ahead, Dr. Ford, with your next question.
Okay, this question here is coming from one of our community partners. And it says, and this is more specifically going to the incumbents, but I would like to hear from the other candidates as well, but just in a different format. Are there any plans to bring more businesses to West Dayton? For example, Sugar Creek, which employs people in the neighborhood. So that question should go first to the two sitting commissioners. And then, what would the other candidates do if you were in their chair at the same time?
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Question is, businesses, new businesses and new jobs to West Dayton. Something that I've learned as a city commissioner is that the best way to create more jobs is to support the businesses that are already there. The questioner mentioned Sugar Creek, which is a great employer and a great neighbor. We do everything we can to make sure that they're expanding there, to make sure that they're hiring our folks, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to cooperate. And they're not the only example, but they're a great example. So trying to make sure that we're taking care of the employers who are here, so they keep hiring, is very important to us. As far as attracting new, this is Commissioner Shaw's thing, so I'm going to let him talk mostly about it. But I will say that we're excited about some of the entrepreneurship opportunities we have with our Entrepreneur Center. We're reaching out west. We have folks reaching out to people with ideas, helping them develop them into business plans. We have these efforts funded, and through our new office at the Arcade, the Entrepreneur Center, we're going to make sure that they have the network and the resources that they need to bring those to fruition. But I don't want to steal Commissioner Shaw's thunder.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, that is very near and dear to my heart, attracting businesses to our community, to supporting the ones that are already here. We have a very robust process for that, and it's the Procurement Enhancement Plan. I was one to help create that, many, many years before I ever thought about running for office, because I drew on my experiences in the business community. And we put together a good program. Is it perfect? No. When we first started that, it had a lot of teeth in it. We had some compliance that was very robust. We had joint ventures that we used to strengthen and help small businesses that are just out on their own, to get funding and to get bonding, which was really important. But we're starting to see businesses grow in West Dayton. The West Dayton Incubator, and the commissioner was just talking about the Arcade downtown and the Entrepreneur Center, making connectivity into the neighborhoods, and that was intentional. We made it very clear that that's what we wanted. So I talked to you about traveling to DC to bring back resources here. What did that? I'm on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee for the National League of Cities, and I was able to bring back two hundred thousand dollars to stand up the Raze Program, which connects the ecosystem downtown and the entrepreneurial ecosystem with West Dayton specifically. Not East Dayton, West Dayton, because we know that that is a very neglected part of our city, but with very rich resources, and folks that understand business, they just need to be supported a little bit. So we're getting to that. These connections are happening live. So many different resources that are in the community for small business. We're going to continue to support that, and if you elect me, in November, we are going to strengthen that and make it even better than it has been.
And for the candidates, the other candidates, if you were in that chair, you know, what would you do specifically to bring new business to West Dayton?
Thank you, Mr. Ford, for that question. I didn't tell you the other side of myself. I'm a minority business owner. I've been investing in businesses for thirteen years. I'm in a very unique position. I work for myself, I work how I want to work, and I work when I want to work. So I'm in a very unique position. I have the time to be here and talk to you and serve citizens. Three things I think businesses care about: taxes, regulations, profitability. So if we go out to different communities, that's the first thing I'm going to ask is, is it conducive for my business? What's your taxes? What's your local income taxes? What regulatory policies that you have? Are they up to date? Are they out of date? And profitability. If you're a businessperson, I'm in business, you got to make money. If you're not making money, you can't pay your employees. If you're a business person, I'm in business, you got to make money, if you're not making money, you can't pay your employees, you can't pay the overhead, you can't pay your mortgage. So with that being said, if I was elected city commissioner, going out to businesses and talking to them and learning and just listening, saying, hey, what do you think we could do better? I'm self-employed, I don't have actual business of employees, so I'd love to talk to business owners, and I talk to, I have relationships with business owners to this day. What could the city do to help be more conducive to your business? Are there any taxes or any type of ordinances that are outdated, or is there ordinances that we need that can help your business thrive? Technically, youth, as a city commissioner, if I'm elected, investing in your youth, that is business. I'm thirty-four, but I'm looking at a kid who may be fourteen, that's the next Jordan Worthen, the next day trader, investor, real estate person. So investing in your youth is investing in business because eventually we're going to give a torch to them. And if you have a business now, like I have a business now, I want my son to take it, my son's five, when I'm dead and gone, I want my son to operate my business. So investing in youth is huge, and I appreciate that question, Mr. Ford, and I think that that's how I approach it if I'm elected Dayton City Commissioner.
Mrs. Anum, sorry, Mr. Beddington?
Thank you for the question. I think what we keep hearing tonight is this idea that development and job creation has to start downtown. And part of what my campaign is saying is we need to change the conversation and be far more intentional about the west side of Dayton. And so what that meant for me is saying, the tax abatements and the tools that we use to usher in development downtown, we can do the same thing on the west side if we prioritize it. My campaign is actually supported by someone who grew up in the area, her father was an engineer in the Oregon District, her name is Hannah Beekler. She is an award-winning movie filmmaker, she got an Oscar for the movie Black Panther. She's looking at returning to Dayton and investing millions in this community by being visionary, not by saying, let's keep rolling out the red carpet for big businesses that cut and run as soon as things get hard in this community. I grew up in Trotwood, there's a mall missing, there's a Walmart missing, there's a Target missing, there are grocery stores missing, that is replicated in Dayton. We can't keep rolling out the red carpet for big developers who have no investment in this community, aside from what we give them from the candy store, and then as soon as things get hard, they run. So what I'm saying is let's be visionary and let's be thoughtful and let's be intentional. So Hannah Beekler, you know, someone who has millions to invest in this community, is saying, let's build film industry on the west side. We have entire industries to replace, my dad was a factory worker, he now drives trucks five days a week. That's not what he planned to do for the rest of his life, you know, and his job was pulled from up underneath his feet. And we have entire, you know, manufacturing industry to replace. We have to be far more visionary than, you know, piecemealing it with this business and that business, we have to invite entire industry here. And Hannah Beekler is bringing millions to the west side of Dayton, buying a home on Sevignon, and saying, let's be visionary about our community, and that's my perspective.
Okay, so, how do we do startup businesses?
I think they want you to speak up.
Okay, how do we generate, how do we generate businesses? And they're talking about the west side of the city. Mr. Shaw, I've never seen you at a city commission, at a, any neighborhood association meeting, any business association meeting. Since September, I've attended about ninety percent of the neighborhood meetings and the business meetings, and most of those are held during the day around noon time. I've never seen you promote anything like what you're talking about, and I've never seen any results of what you're talking about. We need to, we're getting $138 million, the city is, and we're starting to give it out to, you know, special interests. $178,000 grant went to a gentleman that wants to start a chicken place on North Main Street. Well, that's great, $178,000 to one business. Okay, now, where's the equity and fairness for the rest of the businesses throughout not only west side, the east side, north side? Everybody should be included, this $138 million, you taxpayers that pay for this, you're the ones that should get the share. So we need startup money for businesses, we need to re-change our zoning and accommodate, to cut this red tape, and then that will generate small business development, thank you.
For my business, for what I do, and a business I started in an old corner grocery store that was, I bought for $2,200, that should have been torn down, is I own an ad agency, so we work with small startups, small, medium-sized businesses, and we help them grow. They pay us for the services. This is what I do, I help businesses grow. And I'm going to tell you something, politicians who think their job is job creation are smoking something. That is not their job, it is not their job to be investors, to be picking winners and losers. Why did we give $2 million for a hotel in the Arcade? We just built three other hotels downtown. There is no need for your tax dollars to go to subsidize a corporation from out of town to open a hotel. You talk about job creation on the west side, yet where did the job creation go under these guys? You've been out at the airport lately, do you see all that, those new warehouses, right? Where are the people going, how are they getting there to those jobs? There's no easy bus route, there's no train, now the roads are clogged up there with cars and trucks going up to the airport, which wasn't meant for that, while we've got the old McCall Publishing site sitting there empty with a rail spur and everything else. They don't care about jobs on the west side that you can get to. If you want to see people rise out of poverty, I talked about some of these things thirty years ago. One is, we need round-the-clock affordable childcare, because that's the leading problem of people getting to jobs and getting to work, young people, and get them out of poverty. There are cities that have done free public transit, and I want Dayton to be one of them to help bring people out of poverty and get them to those jobs.
Thank you. I'm going to try to combine several questions because they go to the division on the city commission. And one question asks this question, what steps are you taking now to set up a compromised city budget to avoid the unrest we had at the end of last year's cycle? The other one is, I was perplexed to, to a recent resolution to pay a mediator to work out the differences between the commissioners. Isn't it the prerogative for the commissioners to vote the way they believe their constituents desire? And so I think if I combine those two, I'm asking the candidates and the current commissioners, how would you avoid the stalemate we had in December? And how would we go forward without asking for an outside, I don't know how much was paid for this consultant, but how do we go forward as a unified commission without paying more taxpayers' dollars for an outside consultant to do something that we, that you as elected officials should be, you as elected officials should be able to do? Now let's start with Mr. Shaw and go this way now, and come back, okay?
Thank you. Okay, great, thanks for that question. Yeah, frankly, I don't believe we have to agree on everything. I mean, I think we all have been elected to vote the way that we feel is right, and that's what I intend to continue doing. Yeah, there has been a lot of angst and anxiety and just issues upon the dais, and it was different than anything I've ever experienced prior to now. But the fact of the matter is, we all care about the city, we want to make things better. Hard choices that we have to make, money doesn't grow on a tree out in front of City Hall, so we have to make very difficult choices. But at the end of the day, I think we're on a good path here, and I don't think that there is a huge problem if we disagree sometimes. Oftentimes, it's the way that we do it, because these commission meetings are not town hall meetings, they are business meetings. And regular order would suggest that we conduct them in that way. But, you know, things are moving well, we are going to be just fine in this next budget cycle. I think it is important that we kind of scale back on these emergency resolutions, I think it's important that we proceed effectively, and we're doing that work. So I will continue to vote my conscience, and I would encourage all my colleagues to do the same thing. And things will start to calm down and get a lot better. But these are all very passionate people, we agree on about ninety-five percent of the things, but again, it's just how do you do it, and we will work through it.
Mr. Worthing's next, and we start again.
Mr. Roberts, thank you for putting that colorful questions together, because I think people do care about that. I think that we all here are educated, we have common sense. If I'm a police officer and I go to a scene, I see an anomaly, if I see something that doesn't make sense, it makes you look further into something. Two commissioners and the mayor, in the past several years, have agreed on everything. I know what you know, three people with different experiences, backgrounds, religions, it's impossible for three people to agree on everything. So what does that lead you to believe? There's something behind the story, I think any normal person would look into. So saying that, emergency orders are totally abused. Why are they abused? Again, just investigate, it's a red flag, why are they abused? I'm asking a rhetorical question, I think I can answer that rhetorical question. If I wait till the last minute to put something through, that lacks transparency, it lacks accountability. I don't think this is just Jordan's opinion, I think, you know, I've owned the business for thirteen years, I've raised a son, it's just common sense. My mom and father were pretty smart people. So emergency orders are very abused. The $30,000 that we just spent, because you have certain commissioners that want to protect the establishment, and certain commissioners that don't care about the establishment, it's a waste of money. And what are you going to accomplish? Nothing, until we have a collaborative effort of all commissioners, being genuine and voting on their heart. What makes United States of America is freedom. You have the freedom to believe what you believe, and that's what makes us unique and one of the best countries in this world.
Mr. Beddington?
Thank you very much. So, you know, when you're asking, should we be paying, excuse me, tax dollars to get adults to get along, I think the answer is an unequivocal no. When we need to pay, you know, to the tune of $30,000 or $40,000 to foster basic working relationships with people who have been duly elected, I think it speaks to the people who have the power on the dais, and when you have your three votes, to your point, there's no need to agree on everything because you have the agreement that you need, and that's what we saw in the budget fight, they had the agreement, you know, and it was a foregone conclusion. So to talk to the other commissioners was busy work. We can't have that when they have been duly elected and very vigorous election. And so we need to get to a place where we are having conversations on every issue, not just because you have a monopoly on power or like a recent vote, you recused yourself, and then when things got a little dicey, you were going to come out of recusement to make sure, you know, you got what you wanted out of the commission, that's not fair, that's not transparent, that's not where we need to be, and it doesn't do a service to this community. Furthermore, in a country where we see rampant violence and gun violence and abuse, the idea that we can turn on our committee, city commission meeting and see a duly-elected member of the commission being screamed at, shut down, silenced in the face of police chiefs or whoever else wants to speak to what the three, you know, with the voting power want to hear or want to pass, that trickles down into the neighborhood, and so, you know, I have a sister, I have a mother, my sons are young, I don't want them learning that it's okay in the halls of power to scream at a woman you don't agree with. And I think we are way beyond the pale when it comes to basic respect on our city commission.
Okay, well, the people that are suffering because these three have monopoly, the mayor and Chris Shaw and Matt Joseph, are the people. The people are the ones that are suffering. We have church groups that are going before the city commission, pleading with the city commissioners to change their policies, their policies towards, they're torn down Good Sam, they want to see a health facility there. It falls on, they've gone, this group has gone before the city commission, week after week after week, pleading with these city commissioners to help them get a health facility over there where Good Sam used to be. It falls on deaf ears, so when you have a monopoly of power, that's what happens. And not only are the other two commissioners shut down, the neighborhoods, the businesses, the whole rest of the citizens in Dayton are shut down. So that's where these guys are coming from, and Chris Shaw, just simple, hey, you know, it's working now, I don't intend to change my tune or anything else, you know, we have got the monopoly of power, so, oh, too bad. Too bad for the citizens of Dayton. So if you elect me, I would be the third vote with Darryl Fairchild and Shanice Turner-Sloss, I would be the third one. So then what would happen? Okay, what would happen then? I would actually work with Chris Shaw, Matt Joseph, and Jeff Mims, and, or one of them has to go.
Yeah, one of them has to go.
Yeah, one of them has to go, but I would minus one, city commissioner Jeff Mims, I would work with the other two commissioners, Darryl Fairchild and Shanice Turner-Sloss. And we then have to have a compromise, right? There would have to be a compromise for the people.
Thank you.
Now, you're not going to believe this story, but there was a time in my neighborhood that we were deeply divided. We had people paying for memberships in my neighborhood organization to have them come and vote. Five dollars was the membership fee back then, and we had something like 200 votes this election, and it was a division. And things went really bad. And so I ran for neighborhood president, and what I did was institute policies and agenda with clear, and these meetings stopped being three hours long, and we came together, and after two years, I said, okay, I've got this guy picked to be my replacement, he's going to take over, and things smoothed out. I also ran a veterans business group for seven years, and we did a lot of things, and there was a lot of division there, and we brought everybody together and it worked well. But let's talk about the real elephant in the living room right here. Shelley Dixtein should have been fired on the spot for bringing a budget as an emergency ordinance. Shelley Dixtein should still be held liable for the hole on Mudlow, that big gaping spot, where she paid all this money to student suites to come here, your tax dollars, $2 million, made a hole in the ground, gave the crown piece of the building to the guy who tore everything down, including the part he wasn't supposed to. Shelley Dixtein, who spent $5 million to bring a Kroger without a contract. Why is this woman still running, and I'll tell you why? Because power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. These three men, and I have a lot of respect for Mr. Mims, for Mayor Mims. I don't have a whole lot of respect for these two guys, I think they're really nice guys, but I don't think they have a clue. We had a culture of corruption investigation by the FBI, it's not done, and you will find out eventually what really happened.
Just so you know... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Joseph answered, ah, sorry, Senator. So, my old colleague, Mayor McClain, used to say, the key to commission doing business the right way was to disagree without being disagreeable. And those are words that have stuck with me the whole time, just like a lot of other things she said, but this one particularly, it's in my head, you know. So Commissioner Fairchild asked us to do mediation, you know, I can't say mediation is my favorite thing in the world, I can't imagine not many people...
Um, but really, the key is to make sure that we disagree and we find good ways to disagree. Part of that is, uh, make sure the process, uh, leading up to legislation, notification of what's going on, make sure that's accessible to everybody, make sure it's agreeable to everybody, that everybody's comfortable with when they know about any piece of legislation or proposed legislation. Uh, you know, when they know the schedule for budget hearings, uh, how many there are, that sort of thing. So if you have a good process leading up, something that everybody, all five of us agree on ahead of time, that smooths things out on the back end, it really does. So I, I've, I've good hope, like Commissioner Shaw said, that we're on the way to getting things, uh, running more smoothly, uh, living up to, to Mayor McClain's, uh, suggestion that we need to learn how to disagree without being disagreeable, and, uh, like Commissioner said, we all want the best for the city, we do. We have solidly different ways of looking at it, um, but, but I think we're making strides, and, and I certainly am gonna work to get there.
And thank you. Uh, there is a question from one of our members that's specifically for Mistress Ruddy, but we're not gonna do that, because we wanna make certain that the questions that we ask here, everybody has an opportunity, uh, to answer those particular questions. So we're not singling out anyone, uh, so that's, and that's to our members, we're not gonna do that.
So, uh, just further, Mr. President, if I may, so if you gave me a question for a specific candidate, that question will not be asked either. So what the President's saying, if there is a specific question for a specific individual, we will not ask it.
Right.
If you can make it generic to everybody, then we'll put it into the mix, okay? Go ahead, Mr. President.
All right, uh, so the next question, uh, that I have is, uh, is from one of our members, another one from one of our members. Uh, and then my next question after Chairman Roberts is that I'm gonna go to education from there, but this question specifically says, what is the general plan for permanent part-time city employees to become full-time? What is the general plan for permanent part-time city employee to become full-time? And maybe if you all can, uh, well, I guess we wanna start with Jordan now and go, go around.
Thank you for that question, whoever asked it. Um, what is the plan to make part-time employees permanent? Honestly, I'm not incumbent, um, I don't have access to information, and I don't know. Um, I'd like to highlight one candidate who's a city commissioner, just mentioned that mediation, he doesn't really like, doesn't really feel comfortable with it. Well, guess what? When you're an elected official in America, and you're a public servant, every day is a three-sixty approach to every problem. To sit and say, I'm not comfortable with mediation, I'll do it if I have to. I think we all know, if you elect a public servant, they're not gonna know all the answers, but what they're gonna do is, is just give and take. They're gonna say their point of view, they don't listen to your point of view. There may be a holistic three-sixty point of view that's totally contradictory and opposing, but that's what makes America, America. We don't want, uh, one-lane candidate, a, a, a one-issue candidate just on this issue, and then this, this candidate's on this issue and that issue. We want to elect a five-city commission to bring Mr. Worthing's experience, to bring Mr. Ruddy's experience, uh, Ms. Duncan or Mr. Bettigieg, we want them to all come, their own experiences, their own lifestyles, their own religions, whatever, background, we want them to come together and work together and say, hey, I may disagree with such and such, but how can we bridge together? Where can we agree to disagree? And how can we move the needle forward? You can always go forward, like, taking different sides.
Mr. Bettigieg?
Much like Mr. Worthing, I don't know a specific plan to, to take part-time employees to full-time. What I do know is that our city jobs, number one, have to be competitive. Um, right now, if you work in the city, you probably work for the city or the county. Um, we need to make our jobs competitive to where you don't have to go, I work in Beaver Creek, to where you don't have to go out to the suburbs to actually make a living. Um, and so, you know, when we're talking about wages and incomes, we need to figure out how to make city jobs, uh, more competitive with the rest of the region, because, um, it, it's, it's not, frankly, we're talking about jobs that are permanently part-time, um, how does that put food on the table or, you know, pay your bills? That's not a real-world proposition for 2023, and so I think a lot of these ideas are just really antiquated, and nobody has made it a priority to say, um, you know, a permanent part-time position is not something that puts food on anybody's table, um, and so how do we fix this? Um, and so if I'm on the city commission, that's certainly a priority for me, I understand what it means to work a regular job, I'm a retail manager now as we speak, um, I am not a business owner, I am not an engineer, um, I make an everyday honest guy living, and we need to support that in this city. Um, and that includes our city staff and workforce, um, so that's how I see it.
Okay. Well, a lot of this has to do with, uh, um, negotiating a contract. Uh, the city of Dayton, the, the city manager's office gets together with, um, representatives from the union, and they put together a, a three-year contract. Now, because of COVID and because of lack of, uh, of, uh, getting revenue to the city of Dayton, because people are staying home and, uh, working out of their homes, so then the city cannot collect, when they go out to Beaver Creek or they live in, uh, they go, uh, work out in Trotwood, they can't collect that income tax money, because they're not going to those particular, uh, jobs. The city has always, um, dealt with this part-time, permanent, full-time for, for the longest time. I, I worked for the city for thirty-one years, the contracts are negotiated every three years. Um, there should be a path that, that is agreeable with the, with the, um, ASME union and the, and management to get people from part-time permanent to full-time permanent. The reason why they're on part-time permanent is they don't have, you don't get all the benefits as a full-time permanent, and so the city saves money that way. But at the same time, uh, that's to the disadvantage, actually, to, to the city, because then you are gonna have all these part-time permanents, you know, they only can work up to thirty, thirty-five hours at the most, um, and then you're gonna actually have more people working than if you had a permanent staff. So I would, as a city commissioner, work with the ASME union to create a pathway for these part-time permanents to go to full-time permanent.
So, here's a little surprise for you. The city commission is like a board of directors. They are not the operations people that run the city, as done by the city manager, that's what a city manager form of government does. We are supposed to provide policy and direction, we are not supposed to get into the nitty-gritty of individual hiring. I will tell you, there have been stupid things about our hiring process, practices in the city of Dayton for a long time. One of them is that we refuse to recognize police officers with thirty years' experience from other departments, especially when they're a black male, and tell them they can't carry a gun, because they didn't go through the Dayton Police Academy and keep their notebooks straight. Stuff like this is petty, petty, petty. The reality is, if you work for the city, we're work, we hired you because we believe in you, and you should have an opportunity to rise up through the ranks and become a leader. Now, you wanna hear a real horror story in this city? And I know I'm not running for school board, but we have an exceptional Daytonian who has set records in track, who has gone on to get his PhD, has excelled in everything he's done in this city, he's worked in the schools for twenty-plus years, and the school board says, no, we're, we're gonna rehire the person we never even interviewed and did a background check on, we're not gonna open up, they do this sort of thing. Our hiring practices say we don't believe in the people that we have in our operations. This guy's worked in Dayton Public Schools for thirty, oh, close to thirty years, and they passed him over, for a woman who's been here for six years and has a horrible track record. We've got a problem in Dayton that we don't grow our own, and the real indication of a leader is that they've prepared the people underneath them to step up into those jobs when those jobs become available. We don't do a very good job of that here.
Uh, so, uh, part-time permanence, we probably had the most that we've had in a while, about, uh, twelve or fifteen years ago after the Great Recession. Um, since then, the number of part-time permanents has gone down, um, and, uh, some of the previous speakers here mentioned that the, the number of part-time permanents and the path to move up is a, a, a function of the, the agreements that we make with labor. So, uh, management sits down with, with our labor unions, uh, and negotiates a contract, as Ms. Duncan said, and, uh, one of the instructions that we generally give, we're allowed to give advice, we don't, as Mr. Ruddy says, we don't get into the weeds of it, but some advice that we give is to reduce the number of part-time permanents, so people have, uh, proper pay and proper benefits. So over these years, the number has been reduced, and I expect that to continue. Um, and it's something else that I wanna address in a related topic is succession planning. We went, uh, when I was first elected, we had almost two thousand people employed in our general fund, and as of right now, we're eleven hundred, eleven hundred and fifty people. Um, so it becomes really important to make sure that people are trained well, to make sure that we're identifying people, uh, so they're exposed to different things in the organization, so we have the next leaders ready to move up. And that's something that we have emphasized by necessity, uh, and because we need good leaders in the city, in the city administration. So we're working on that, too, and I think that if we're talking about moving part-time permanents to regular positions, uh, that sort of falls through, we wanna be consistent and make sure that we're looking for talented folks ready to move up to the years or two, we need to make that a, a consistent line. Thank you. Yeah, that's great, and a very, very good, uh, good question. So I agree with, with that, Commissioner. Um, you know, the way that the market is now, we're, we're in such desperate need for employees that, you know, part-time, I mean, that's a good funnel for us to, to get them into, that's the Homegrown Heroes Program, where if you work for the organization, part-time or whatever, uh, especially with police, you can move to the front of the line in terms of the, uh, the police test and to get on the police force. So that was a really good program, and it actually helps with the diversity in the police department, because some folks that would have traditionally been left out or, um, canceled out for whatever reason, uh, are now able to, again, go to the front of the line, so I'm very proud of that work. Um, you know, we, uh, the Commissioner was right, the city manager does negotiate contracts, and that's the way it should be. We, we can have some input, and we tell them that we're prioritizing taking care of our people. And that's why Commissioner Joseph and I were both endorsed by the ASME Labor Union, as well as most of the other, uh, labor unions in this, in this region, uh, because of our commitment to the, to the unionized labor and, and our workers, uh, in the city. And that's why, frankly, uh, there was a lot of, uh, anxiety and anger to a certain degree when we were talking about the budget, because we were committed to supporting our workers who put their skills and lives on the line to do a good job for our citizens each and every day. So we stand up for them, we're gonna continue to do that, and I just look for your support on November seventh and, and May second.